Recording in progress. Recording in progress.
Mr. Chairman, I just heard a voiceover saying recording was in progress, if that helps.
Thank you, Fred. I think that Pam has started the. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of October 30th, 2024. My name is Doug Marshall and is Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:48 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to provide meeting access due to economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the meeting on the town website as soon as feasibly possible. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Fred Hartwell.
Present.
Bruce Coldom, we believe, is absent this evening, and Lawrence Clutz notified us that he would be late arriving, if at all. Jesse Major.
Present.
Johanna Newman.
Present.
And Karen Winter.
Present.
And I, Doug Marshall, am present as well. Thank you all. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. For the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be taken at other times when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can typically express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, time is 6:51. We'll start off with the first item on our agenda, which is meeting minutes. We have two sets of minutes to review this evening. One, the first one from July 31st of 2024. Did anyone have any comments on the minutes? All right, I noticed one. I think it was on the first one. Just a typo. Maybe it was on the second one, so. Yeah, so on Pam, at the bottom of page seven of the July 31st minutes, under section 10, report of the chair.
Okay.
Second line. It says he will, it should be ask Ms. Newman, the K is missing.
Got it.
All right, any other comments on this set of minutes? Johanna.
Sorry, I was going to move to approve the minutes.
All right, well. Thank you, and Jesse, you're seconding?
Yep, I'll second.
All right. Great, I will, I will mention that it's 6:53 and it looks like Nate Malloy is joining us. Okay, we'll proceed with the vote on the July 31st minutes. Fred. You're going to be first tonight because Bruce isn't here. Fred, you are muted.
I thought I, now it's muted.
Correct.
I was absent July 31st, so if needed, my vote will be yes, but I shouldn't be making the motion.
All right, well, we have made the motion and seconded. So you can abstain at the moment. Would you like?
Owe it.
You would like to abstain, right? All right.
Yes.
All right, Jesse.
I approve.
Thank you. Johanna.
I approve.
Karen.
I approve.
And I approve as well. All right, that's two members absent, one abstention, and four in favor. So I believe that passes, so July 31st minutes are adopted. Now we go to the September 18th minutes. And it looks like all of us were present. I did not notice any issues with that set of minutes. Johanna.
Move to approve the minutes.
All right. Anybody want to second that? Jesse, I see your fingers.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. We will go to the vote. Fred.
Fred votes aye.
Thank you. Jesse.
Aye.
Johanna.
Aye.
And Karen.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, so that's five in favor with two absences. Great. Welcome, Nate. All right, the time now is 6:56. And next item on our agenda is public comment. I see we have six attendees. This is when I usually read the names of the people I can see among the public. So we have a stranger named Christine Bresztrup. We have Jennifer Taub. We have Ken Rosenthal. Maura Keane. Pam Rooney. And Rob Mora. All right, members of the public, this is the time to make a comment if you would like to do so on a topic which is not going to appear later on tonight's agenda. All right, I see one hand. Pam, if we could bring over Ken Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr.
Hello, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I take the time of the planning board only for one purpose tonight, which is to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for telling the members of the public, as well as the planning board members in advance, who are present at the meeting so that we may know what other members of the public might have an interest in anything that's coming before you. That will also help us to moderate our comments, because if we know that somebody else who might be speaking on the same topic and with the same position as we, we might not choose to raise our hand. That will make things more efficient. Mr. Chairman, I thank you. You are the only government body in this town that does this. I wish others would do it, and I praise you for it. Thank you for listening.
All right, well, thank you, Ken. You know, if you want to take the time, you might attend the meetings of those other bodies and ask if they can do what we do.
I, I want to ask the town manager again to do that, sir.
Okay, all right. Very good. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? All right. I do not see any other hands. All right, in that case, since the next item on our agenda is scheduled for 7:05, we will jump down in our agenda to some of our routine items going at this point to number six, which is old business. Pam, do we have any topics of old business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance that did not show up in the agenda?
I don't think so, Mr. Marshall. Nate, do you agree, or are you aware of something?
No, I agree. I don't, I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. Likewise, same question about any new business.
And I have the same answer. I'm not aware of anything, but Nate, do you agree?
Agreed.
Perfect.
All right. Going next to the Form A A&R subdivision applications, do we have any of those this evening?
We have no A&Rs tonight and none waiting in the queue either.
Okay, what about ZBA applications?
So I have learned about a couple of things, and Nate, you may need to help me out. I learned about these late today. And of course, the ZBA is still focused on the Wayfinders project, correct, Nate?
Right.
And I do understand that in November, the Shrewsbury Road Solar is expected to come back, but to be asked to be continued to a date in January is my understanding. I just learned that today, so Nate, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong or misspeaking.
Yep, that's, that's right. There, you know, they're still, they have to file with the Conservation Commission and go through that, and they're, you know, looking at some, some of their other plans and engineering work, so they will ask to be, have that continued, yep.
And then Mission Cantina is expected to come before the ZBA in early November. They've had a change of ownership there, so they need to accept a new, submit a new management plan. And then briefly, I can tell you that 19 research dry. And then briefly, I can tell you that Nineteen Research Drive is also expected to go in front of the ZBA at that early November meeting. And my understanding is that they have a second floor space in the building that they are going to convert to living space for some of their personnel.
Okay. It doesn't sound like we would wanna see any of those and, and give any sort of recommendation to ZBA. At least that's how I react to what you've described. Board members, if there's any, anybody else thinks we should have one of those come to a meeting, this is the time to suggest that. Okay, how about SPP, SPR, SUB applications? Anything coming our way?
We do. We do have two of those coming up. The high school track site plan review application has been submitted. It's in the very early stages of the review process. I do believe we had expected that maybe the first meeting in December that would come before you. I might have that date wrong. And then the second item, we may have told you about this, we had been expecting a preliminary subdivision plan to be submitted for four twenty-two Amity Street, and indeed, that was just submitted. So neither one of those have been filed with the town clerk at this point, but expect to probably tomorrow or Friday.
Alright. So those will both be coming sometime before the end of the year.
That is correct.
Okay. We still have three minutes to occu- to, to spend together. We've gone up to the Planning Board Committee and Liaison Reports. Bruce is not here to talk about PVPC. I'm actually not the person for CPAC anymore, so we can change that on the agenda. That's Lawrence, and he's not here, at least at this point. Karen, anything on design review board?
We, we had the high school track to review, and that was interesting, but we felt that we were totally out of our league to make much comments on that, but we're excited. And then there's a little shop, graff- graphite graphic shop on Triangle Street, which is changing their logo and their sign to make it clear, and we approved that. And then last, we have a nice little bakery, Buttercup, going in where Henin was. And we asked them to come back because we're excited, but there was an awful lot of yellow on their sign, so they, and, and they seemed very appreciative of the time to try to rethink that a little bit. But that's coming, and that's going to be reviewed the next time.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, Pam, is there anything else we can do with sixty seconds before we hit seven oh five?
I don't know. How long is your chair report? Oh, Karen has her hand raised.
Yeah, it's not very long. Karen?
Yeah, I, I don't know, Doug, when I should bring this, but I, I do think that we have to put the Berry Roberts development of the Amherst Dormitory on the agenda, just to discuss it briefly, at least at the next agenda to have a public meeting, because it does seem, I mean, it came awfully fast. And I, I do wonder if there is some illegality at all in having a dormitory in an area that is not zoned RF. At very least, I think the public deserves to have this be clarified a little bit. So.
Alright, well, I know you had sent an email earlier, and I believe Nate had looked into that, and my understanding was that it is a mixed-use building. It has commercial in it. And that, you know, we don't allow commercial in dormitories anywhere, so that category doesn't really apply. Nate, was there anything else? I think you had said we, it's been filed and?
I said that the decision hasn't been filed, so, you know, staff's opinion is that if the board wants to discuss this, the discussion really then is, do we want to reopen the hearing? You know, to discuss the change in possible use, but for now, you know, I thought it was pretty clear during the planning board hearings what the use was. It was understood, and then, you know, the decision was made, so really, a discussion tonight or at any time wouldn't be about, you know, what is it or isn't it in terms of uses or conditions? It's really about, does the board feel like it would want to reopen the hearing? Because the decision hasn't been written and filed, right? So it's, it's in that, it's in that time period where the board could have that opportunity. But, you know, I thought it was, you know, everyone understood what, what it was, you know, when it came through the board.
Okay, alright, so I guess the question would be, do enough board members want to reopen the hearing in order that we would vote to do that? So maybe I should just I'm gonna, I guess, Nate, why don't I just do a motion and then we can vote on it and see where it goes? So I'll move that we reopen the hearing for the, for Berry Roberts' project on Southeast Street. The number escapes me. I don't remember the particular application number.
Should we say forty-five to fifty-five South Pleasant?
Pleasant.
Thank you, forty-five to fifty-five South Pleasant. Jesse, I see your hand.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I had a question before I can vote, which is based on what you said, Nate. The project as we have it, you're saying does not meet the definition of dormitory?
Well, we, we, before we have that conversation, I think we need to decide whether we want to sort of talk about this more. Isn't that right, Nate?
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was a question about what it was when it was coming back before the board. If that was something that needed to be brought up, it would have been brought up. Right, I just want to make sure I understand correctly what we're talking about, because, okay. Enough.
Okay. So I made a motion. If somebody, if there's anybody that supports that motion, this is the time to second it. If no one seconds it, we will move on.
I second it, and I, I agree, just if Nate, if a dormitory cannot be a dormitory if there is commercial space in it, then it's not, then of course, the, the question is clear. I just wasn't, it all came so fast, and I just want to make sure that we don't set a precedent of, of agreeing that's, that this sort of thing can go when it's not in our bylaws, so it's just unclear to me. That's why I second that we reopen this.
Okay. Alright. Fred, I see your hand. Fred, you are muted.
My bad. I, I think I'm inclined not to reopen it. I was concerned about the way that it was covered in the Daily Hampshire Gazette. I thought it would, we, and I know, Nate, I sent you an email on this. My impression was that, and this is, this is in regard to whether or not that project is reviewable, and the extent to which it's reviewable under the town rental registration bylaw. And my impression was that we changed those conditions to make it clear that 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 it is subject to the bylaw, and if Amherst College wants to pursue options under that bylaw to seek an exemption, they're clear to do that as any landlord could do. But we are not just simply giving them a buy on it. That's the way I understood our action. And if I'm incorrect, then I would change my position and vote to reopen it.
Nate, do you have a clear sense of where we left that question?
No, I, I, when Fred emailed me, I, I thought that's the way it was discussed as well, and so sometimes, you know, the article may summarize or miss a key point or a phrase of that, and so I think someone else actually emailed me about the article, and I, I feel like depending on how, you know, what you read it, or how you read into it, then you might have a different impression of what was discussed at the meeting, the hearing, but you know, I thought the board covered all the, the conditions in the discussion, you know, pretty thoroughly. It was, you know, I, I, I thought by the time we were done with it, we understood everything that was happening.
Right. And I have not seen minutes for that meeting yet. I assume they're in the queue, right, Pam?
They're almost done. I was this close to getting them done, but you wouldn't have had them in this packet. It was just today that I was trying to wrap them up. But that portion is done. I can, I can tell you that that portion of forty-five fifty-five South Pleasant Street, that public hearing portion is done. It is complete.
Okay, thank you. Fred, I see your hand again.
Yeah, and I just wanted, I, I was pretty sure, of my memory, I just, I'm Nate, thank you for confirming that that's, that I was correct in what I surmised, and that being the case, I will vote against the motion to reopen.
Okay. Karen?
So Amherst College clearly, in one of the publications says, kind of advertises this as a dormitory. And I think there's a difference between whether it should be registered, or, I, I mean, does, doesn't the town at some point had put into the bylaws that we cannot have dormitories in any district that is not zoned as RF? That is the question. If it can, it is not a dormitory, if there's commercial space in it, then it's clear, then I also don't want to reopen it. But if it is a dormitory and we aren't allowed to have dormitories in RF without a special permit, then, you know, we're going against the law if we just let this slide, and we're setting a precedent saying we're disregarding this, and anybody can build a big building and put all the lease to UMass or something like that, and we have no control of it. So we do have to clarify that, and I, I'm not sure. I think that we, that's the question, Nate, and I think you know this.
Alright, so Karen, you would, you, you still support reopening the hearing?
Yes, I think I do.
Okay, alright. So is there any more discussion about whether to reopen the hearing or not? We have a motion and we have a second. Pam and Nate, am I correct that a simple majority of the board present are adequate to reopen, to reopen the hearing at a later date?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So we have five members present. Three of us would need to vote yes in order to reopen the hearing. Alright, so I'll start, I guess Fred, I'll just start with you again.
I'll vote no.
Alright. Thank you. Jesse?
I will vote yes. Aye.
Okay. Johanna?
No.
Karen?
Yes.
Alright, and I was a no. That is three opposed and two in favor. My motion fails. Alright, so that was not on the agenda tonight. I guess that's old business not anticipated forty-eight hours in advance.
Yes.
Alright. Time now is seven fifteen. We'll go back to the next item on the agenda. And that is item three, public hearing zoning amendment. So we will I will read the pri- the preamble. Okay, time seven sixteen. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding the following proposal. University Drive Overlay District. To consider amending the zoning bylaw by adopting the University Drive Overlay District as Article seventeen and amending the official zoning map by adding the University Drive Overlay District. The overlay district would include properties on the east and west sides of University Drive between North Hampton Road and Amity Street, and establishes its own requirements for mixed-use buildings including dimensional standards, standards and conditions and design guidelines. Do we have any board member disclosure? Okay. For the applicant presentation, I think Nate, were you gonna give us the sort of rundown on where this has gone since we last talked about it?
Sure, yeah, I'll do that. Nate Malloy, a planner with the town, and so, you know, just a little backstory, you know, the planning board worked on this last year. It went to town council as a zoning amendment, and on and then on Monday, September twenty-third, town council referred it to the Planning Board and Community Resources Committee as, you know, a zoning amendment. So the hearing needs to be opened by the end of November, the twenty-seventh. And then within twenty-one days by the close of the planning board hearing, a report needs to be made to town council, so you know, this hearing is being held within that timeframe, and the board can continue the hearing to discuss the overlay. So what was being proposed is an overlay district. I'll share my screen. If that's visible for everyone?
I can see it.
The, as, as Doug mentioned, the overlay is outlined in black here, so here's Amity Street on the north, University Drive and North Hampton Road, so the overlay does not change the existing zoning in place. There's, you know, base zoning, there's also a research and development overlay, so everything that's there would stay in place, and the overlay would encompass the area within the, the outline. It only applies to mixed-use buildings. And so I'll go to the actual text of the overlay. I was gonna walk through this. So, you know, it establishes its own requirements for mixed-use buildings, so it has dimensional standards, conditions, and design guidelines that apply only for mixed-use buildings, so any other use that would be permitted here would follow the existing zoning that's in place. The purpose is to encourage housing and economic development, and so, you know, the board discussed this in terms of what, what's the right mix of non-residential and residential space? And so that's, you know, the purpose is really, you know, kind of summarize that conversation. We established the district. We came up with dimensional standards unique to just the overlay and mixed-use buildings. There's no waivers, so there's no footnote, you know, M or A. There's no additional lot area required for units, so it is a little bit flexible. Minimum lot size is pretty small, forty feet of frontage, twelve thousand square feet. You have a maximum building coverage of sixty percent and a maximum lot coverage of eighty-five percent. And setbacks are by the street, so on Amity Street is twenty feet, University Drive is twenty-four feet, North Hampton Road is twenty-five. And side and rear is ten. The right-of-way is ninety to a hundred feet wide, and so, you know, on the northern end of this part of the overlay, you know, there'll be about a hundred and fifty feet between, you know, buildings are built right on the setback line. And so it is a pretty wide right-of-way and setback. The setbacks are meant to encourage reuse of the access drive on the west side of University Drive, and then also create a nice greenbelt where there's existing trees to preserve the trees. On the east side, there is the Swift Way, the the multi-use bike path, and the setback allows for all of that to remain. We have a building height of six floors or sixty-five feet. Um, similar to what we have in the bylaw, building height does not include rooftop mechanicals. Um, you know, or certain equipment. And we say the six floors shall be stepped back a distance from the street in order to minimize scale. There's no prescribed distance. That would be something reviewed during permitting. The mixed-use buildings are through site plan review. Um, you know, what we have here is seventy-five percent of the street-facing facade of the first or ground floor facing University Drive or Northampton Road shall be any permitted non-residential use to a depth of twenty-four feet. So the idea here was to encourage, you know, shops facing the street along a majority of, uh, the first or ground floor. Um, we do allow parking in the, in the additional space. So if they need to, you know, have parking inside the building, outside of this required seventy-five percent, they can. Um, we do allow multiple buildings on a property. We do want to have some open space, um, as part of the project. Again, we're not having, um, you know, a certain percentage, but there's, you know, when it's going through site plan review, these standards and conditions will help the, the permit granting authority make those decisions. Um, the multi-use path on the west side of University Drive is something that, uh, you know, the setback is meant to encourage and it's something that, you know, staff and the planning board would talk with applicants about. Uh, we also want outdoor amenity spaces. In terms of parking, we're allowing flexible parking. So there's no on-street parking allowed on University Drive and there's not many neighborhoods close by for, that allow on-street parking. And so the idea really is that, uh, developer or an applicant, um, it has to come and be ready to provide, you know, what we have here is a study and a management plan. Um, and any shared or leased agreements to show that there's adequate parking on the site for the development. And so, um, we're waiving the current sections of the bylaw. Um, and we're not saying that they have more than, you know, right now in our shared or leased parking section, you have to have, you know, a hundred and twenty percent of what you think is necessary and all these conditions for shared parking. We're basically saying it's, it's flexible here. And that could be, you know, they show that in their lease agreements, they don't allow any cars. And so every tenant knows upfront that they don't have cars or that they, you know, have a one-to-one parking ratio or they have shared parking with another property, um, nearby. Uh, the design guidelines here, you know, we're saying the design review principles that are currently in the bylaw, um, shall be applied. We're saying a majority of the front facade should be along the front setback. Um, you know, we, we, again, these aren't, you know, um, overly prescriptive. We're going through a downtown design standards process right now, but here, you know, a few that will help with, uh, the treatment of the building. So, you know, overhanging awnings and canopies between the first and second floor, like a horizontal sign band, uh, variations in architecture and change in plane to break down, um, you know, a massive wall and so, or a large flat facade. So there's, you know, again, that's something that the board will look at during permitting. Um, surface open parking lots, you know, are meant to be to the side or behind buildings. Um, you know, to the extent possible, parking lots will be consolidated to reduce curb cuts. Rooftop mechanical equipment will be screened from view. And so that's something that, you know, is, is becoming more and more important as, uh, there's different types of mechanical equipment. And then again, just, you know, mechanical systems, other things should be placed in a way that they're minimally visible. And so that, that's the extent of the overlay language. Um, and then, you know, it applies again in this area for, for mixed-use buildings. So it's an opportunity for someone who would propose a mixed-use building to use the overlay.
Okay, thank you Nate. Um, so the board talked a lot about this last year. Uh, we've only had a change of one person on the board since we talked about this a lot. So I don't, uh, I, I'm not really expecting a lot of conversation about sort of the basic proposal. Um, and since this has been referred back to us from town council and as I read in all the preambles for these hearings, uh, so that interested members of the public can comment. Uh, that's, to my mind, that's the, the first objective of this hearing is to allow the public to comment on this proposal. Um, but as, uh, any of you that listened to town council when they referred this back to us, uh, heard, there were a number of comments made by counselors about the proposal before they voted. And, um, uh, I don't know if you've all listened to that. Uh, I heard it the first time in live and the second time I, I did go back and listen to it again. So we may want to talk about some of their comments and how, what we think about that, whether the concerns are uh, valid and we should be changing something about the proposal or whether we uh, actually think they're not, uh, significant or valid enough to change something. Jesse?
Is now the time to do that or do you want to wait till after?
Well, I, I thought maybe I would call for public comment first and just hear what the public who have, uh, who are here want to say. Okay, so why don't I go ahead and do that? Um, now's the time for the now nine members of the public that are in the, uh, uh, on my list here. If you have a comment you want to make about this proposal, now's the time to do it. Uh, I will, I will say in advance, I expect that we will continue this hearing. It, this is not the only uh, part of this hearing that will occur. So you, if you don't make a comment tonight and you want to do it when we continue the hearing later this fall, uh, you will have another chance. Okay, Pam, can you bring over Jonathan Slater?
Hi Jonathan.
Welcome Jonathan. Uh, you'll need to unmute yourself and give us your name and your street address in Amherst.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Slater. I'm the director of facilities for Cooley Dickinson Hospital and we have, uh, um, interest in one seventy University Drive as well as an empty lot that, um, abuts Northampton Road. And, uh, although this is the first time, um, thank you for the notice, uh, because this is the first time that I've heard this communication. I've been with Cooley for almost five years now. And the only thing that I, I have in concern to this location is what we're currently struggling with for wetlands and stormwater runoff that comes off of the Route nine, um, uh, passageway. And we're experiencing groundwater into our structures and stuff. So I just want to be on record uh, for any developments in this area that we take into consideration these struggles we're having on our property currently.
All right. And am I correct, your property is on the east side of University Drive?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we're on the corner of, um, well, we're on, we're on University Drive directly across from the Big Y with the vacant lot on the opposite corner facing Route nine. And then there is a separate business on that corner, uh, facing the intersection, which hopefully someday we can acquire.
Okay. Great. Have you been in contact with the Conservation Commission at all about your groundwater issues?
Th- th- this is all, this is all developing. Um, and this, I, I reached out to Ty and Bond, who is our environmental team and said, this notice couldn't have come at a more perfect time. And I, I'm fortunate to have this opportunity to speak to the group tonight and we do look forward to future conversations.
Okay. All right, uh, anything else you wanted to say?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? Okay. Uh, oh, yes, now we have one hand from Pam Rooney.
Hi Pam.
Good evening, everyone. Pam Rooney, forty-two Cottage Street. I had not intended to speak. Um, I, but since you're talking about this subject, I was looking at item number seventeen point five-two-one. The front setback, excuse me, on the west side of University Drive is meant to encourage the reuse of the access drive into a minimum ten-foot-wide multi-use pedestrian and bicycle path. And I understand that there is not necessarily response to public comment, but it would be interesting to me if, if someone were to discuss the rationale behind this, uh, particular item in that there is on the east side of, uh, University Drive, a wonderful bike pedestrian walkway called Swift Way. On the west side of, uh, University Drive, there is a reasonable, not in great condition sidewalk that extends the entire length of University Drive that is also actively used. There is a ten or twelve-foot wide planting strip that contains the existing fairly mature street trees. Why would there be a need for an additional ten-foot-wide multi-use pedestrian and bicycle path in addition to all of that? Uh, and that's my question. So I would, at some point, if someone happens to talk about this, it would be great to hear the conversation. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and I will mention that, uh, my statement earlier that we don't respond to public comment uh, pertained, per- basically only to the general public comment, I, agenda item. Not that we wouldn't, uh, respond to public comment during specific subjects that are on the agenda. So, uh, I think we could respond to that. Um, my understanding was we wanted to have a vibrant street life along this section of uh, roadway and that having a pretty substantial setback and ma- take, making use of that, that roadway to, uh, you, it evolved away from vehicular use and to pedestrian use was, uh, something we thought would be a valuable amenity in this area. Um, does anybody else want to comment about their, what they remember about this? Uh, Karen?
Yes, I agree. And I think it's, uh, having walkways and pedestrian ways at both sides of the, of a street that's going to be kind of a gateway to the university is, is actually welcome to have it just on one side is, you know, we're, we're hoping that this is going to be much more densely populated and the people that are populating it will really appreciate having a place to, to be, to have wide sidewalks and to be able to walk and, and get away from cars.
Okay. Um, I, I, I will mention one other thing, which is right now that roadway provides vehicular access to properties all the way along that frontage. And, uh, since we don't know the order in which it, things might be developed uh, by allowing a, a building to come forward to that road, uh, if it's out of sequence, uh, could, could cut off vehicular access to a neighbor. Um, so that's another reason, uh, to, to structure it that way. Johanna, you had a comment?
Yeah, I think this came up among the town council conversation as well about how.
Yep. Andy brought it up.
Andy brought it up, exactly. And you know, I think the vision is that this is a really pedestrian and bike-friendly boulevard of sorts with mature street trees and a vibrant street life. Like, that's the end goal. And the question is, like, I, I don't know the answer to this Doug. I'd be curious to hear your thoughts, but let's say we do adopt the overlay and an institution that's like in the center of the decides that they want to, you know, rebuild and essentially cut off that side street. How, how are there models for mitigating that is the first question? And then the second question, you know, had to do with the number of driveway cuts on University Drive and addressing the fact that vehicles may need to turn and how it influences, I think, the traffic pattern on University Drive. Um, so I think that is a point that would be worth discussing a little bit more. Um, I feel like with the Barry Roberts proposal on the corner, you know, there's the access point around the back on Amity as well as, I think, two proposed cuts on University Drive. You know, I think we decided we were okay with that, but, um, yeah, it's food for thought.
Okay. Yeah, I thought Andy, Andy was predominantly talking about what's the process for allowing more curb cuts along there? What's sort of, what's the logistics of the road as it sort of evolves? Um, it's my understanding that town council is the body that would approve curb cuts on University Drive. And we obviously have a couple of counselors listening in tonight. You guys can correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe you're not expert on that. Jesse?
Yeah, on this point, and maybe Nate could add more. My memory of our conversation was that, yeah, the, the curb cut, um, not allowing more curb cuts was for historic reasons, because it was going to be a main thoroughfare before one sixteen was built and that part of this would be to probably reduce or eliminate that uh, restriction on curb cuts, which would allow for all these scenarios to be fine. Um, that's some of the thoughts about traffic mitigation. Maybe it'll come later, but Nate, I sent you an email. We can talk about that.
Nate?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think some of, there's a, a number of points raised about that setback. One is this existing sidewalk is in really poor condition and the idea is to abandon it if this were to move forward. So, you know, it's almost right on the road. It's actually really not pleasant to walk on. Uh, if University Drive is heavily traveled. And so to have something setback behind the trees, along the buildings, a multi-use path would be great. So the idea too is to limit, you know, to reduce the number of street crossings mid-block if people can walk on both sides to certain points and then cross. Um, uh, yeah, I mean, the curb cut thing is something that, you know, if Public Works is okay with it, I, I don't see why there were, you know, there'd be any restrictions to it. The, additionally, the setback, the road right-of-way, although it's wide, it's not centered on the road. And so if we actually had um, a small setback on that side, some of those street trees in that island would be impacted. And so if we actually want to save and have a nice, wide, generous green belt with the trees, we need actually a pretty generous setback uh, to allow that to happen. If we didn't have a setback and a building came up, they would actually come in probably right onto the curb, the closest curb to that tree belt. Um, and then there's no, you know, no room for actually having a sidewalk unless we were to cut down all those trees and then plant new ones. And so some of the discussion was, you know, how can we save those trees, have a nice streetscape? Allow for, you know, if, if it is multi-unit housing, right? Uh, a three-foot sidewalk is not adequate, but a ten-foot one would be great to have on both sides of the road. Uh, you know, and reduce street crossings.
Okay. So Pam, that's some thoughts about that particular, uh, aspect of the proposal. Um, are there other? Oh, yeah. Okay, Fred, go ahead.
Um, well, another thing that, uh, came up at the council meeting, uh, and, uh, Bruce Colton at, uh, the last time we discussed this, uh, uh, raised it as well. And that concerns, uh, the Big Y parcel at the south end, uh, on the west side. And, uh, whether this, uh, by creating what is potentially a, a higher use, uh, could inadvertently, I'm, I'm, I think we would all agree it would be inadvertent, but it could, it could compromise the market continuance of Big Y in that particular location. And so there was, uh, there's been some conversation around uh, around, uh, moving the, uh, boundary uh, somewhat to the north to prevent that from happening. So, uh, I'm not sure exactly where I come out on this, but I, 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 I think there's a valid concern here that we need to discuss.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, does anybody want to talk about that, that set of comments? So uh, does anybody want to talk about that? That set of comments? There were a number of counselors who brought that up. Uh, Jesse.
Yeah, I was gonna mention this as well. Um. I did listen to that, the council meeting and read the article about it. Uh, well, I don't totally agree with the concern. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't respect that concern and move the boundary and then that. Site can come by special permit if they really want to do a different project. So Nate, you had an idea about. Pushing it back some number of feet, right? That would get past the big Y essentially. If that's what helps us move this project forward, I. Have no objection to to changing the overlay in that way.
Okay. Uh, Nate?
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting moving the overlay boundary. I was suggesting. Changing a standard or condition that say within three hundred feet of that of North Hampton Road or that intersection. The ground floor has to be one hundred percent. You know, non- non-residential space. So right now we have a seventy-five percent to a certain depth. But you know what I was thinking if I um. I'll just share my screen. You know, if they're concerned and and also the building is half, you know, in Hadley too, so it has to, you know. Depending on how what happens with this permitting, but the idea would be if there's concern, you know, that's within this distance. Anything that's redeveloped and within this distance has to be one hundred percent ground floor, non-residential. Um, you know, I, you know, the idea too would be that there's plenty of space to build in front of the big Y or. They could, you know, there's a few options for the property. Uh, there is a stop and shop. Not too far down the street, so to say it would become a food desert. I don't know if that's accurate, but. Um, yeah, I mean, so anyways, that that was my idea. There could be others, but you know, I was trying to think of ways to. Continue the overlay and not have it, you know, miss the corner, but still have some conditions that could allow for a bigger retail space.
All right, um, Jesse, your hand is still up.
I just follow up one time and I I I do agree with the point that the big Y and CBS are, you know, extremely heavily used. I'm there at least two or three times a week also, and like it's always full. It's, while I don't think the result would be that would disappear, if that's a concern, I think we. It's reasonable for us to try and mitigate that, whatever that might mean, including the parking lot that serves a really important function there as well.
Okay. Uh, Fred?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with any approach on this. I think Nate's suggestion has a lot of merit. Uh. Just. Uh. You know, as long as we address it, I think uh it'll go a lot further.
Okay. Uh, I was gonna mention that uh. You know, I I I agree that the comment about it causing a food des- desert is not really. Really substantive, I guess, given the location of. The stop and shop so nearby. Um, but I also, it also occurred to me that the the location where the hanger is located right now. I believe was originally a supermarket. And so, you know, if there are. There is the opportunity for another supermarket to happen in that area with an existing building. Now, obviously, our. Um. Our overlay boundary includes that property. For all we know. You know, the property with the hanger in it and uh the greenfield savings could get redeveloped as well. Um. I guess I was more concerned about uh. The downside of limiting this, uh, just because. Yeah, housing that doesn't happen here. Uh, may have an impact on. The number of students in the neighborhoods where people don't really want them. And if we minimize the amount of potential for this area. Uh, it's more urgent that we consider other areas. Where we would be willing to. Uh, let's say loosen the zoning. Um, and we, you know, it's it seems pretty clear. The students are uh rational actors in that they'd like to be as close to the university as possible. So. Uh, this seemed like an ideal area because of the topography, the proximity to UMass, the good bus service. Um, and in fact, you know, having the having the big Y and CBS right there. So I'm I'm not opposed to trying to figure out what we can do to. Uh, encourage food to be provided in this area. Whether it has to be big Y, I don't. I'm not sure I really care, but uh. You know, I I am sensitive to, well, if we if not here, where? And uh, that is a is a question that. You know, this area is doesn't have much in the way of neighborhoods uh and constituents who are gonna oppose housing. That can. Uh, hold a bunch of people, probably mostly students. Uh, but that's gonna be that many fewer students who are. Out competing for properties in neighborhoods that none of us really want. So um. That's my two cents for the moment. Uh, the next person who had their hand up, I thought, okay, I guess it's Johanna. It's you at the moment.
Thanks. I will say I was struck by how. Little conversation there was in the town council's deliberation about the added housing that could come from this overlay district. Like, that to me feels like a really important issue in our town. This is designed primarily to address that issue and. Again, I was struck that that wasn't acknowledged in that conversation by our town's governing body. Um. I agree that. I'm not worried about the food desert piece. It doesn't feel substantive. I know there was some concern that maybe the stop and shop would close. It's all hypothetical at this point and um, I feel like. I can't help but feel like we are being precious about a strip mall. And I think we can do better in terms of. The buildings that we are encouraging for the future of Amherst. So um, I want the overlay district to succeed. If we have to take the big Y lot. Out of the overlay in order to get the votes for this to succeed. You know, I'm not gonna fall on my sword for it. Um, but I hope that it doesn't come to that and that we can perhaps find some kind of. Intermediate ground where we can continue to keep that very large parcel. In the overlay district as, you know, the potential of being redeveloped. Um, but I also really want to make sure we have the votes to win.
Okay. Uh, Jesse?
Thanks. Uh, I guess I have one more thought. That's leaning pushing me more towards trying to remove that parcel, which is thinking about. Other sites that have gone up in town. And this came up in the council meeting also about how the commercial spaces largely, they're they're fine to leave it unoccupied for some number of months or years. And. Presumably that will happen in this district as well until there's the need or the right tenant or whatever. Um. And that made me feel like. Big Y, CBS, the other four small stores that are there. Why not take that action, take that first step to preserve those? And then again, if in the future, if the rest of it all gets developed, we can reconsider. The owner can reconsider and try and get something built anyway. Through 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 other mechanisms. Um. And and again, I'm thinking also about. Having this move forward from the town council discussion, it felt like there was gonna be a lot of resistance. To a plan that didn't try and mitigate this scenario.
Okay, Fred?
Yeah, um. I. Doug, I I really appreciate your comments, uh, and I, nobody has. Been more enthusiastic than me in terms of uh. Pursuing this overlay and pursuing. The uh uh development in this part of the town to take uh. Market pressure off neighborhoods. I completely agree with your analysis. Uh. I think Nate's uh suggestion really connects all the dots. Um. It uh. Uh. Would uh avoid the probably the unintended effects at in this particular location. Meanwhile, uh. Uh. Preserving the attractiveness of the overlay district in general and. Uh, simply by a a a very sensible way of of conditioning. Uh, what happens uh uh in this dimension, we have. Part of the overlay also addresses has a dimensional uh limitation regarding the north end. So there's. There's precedent in the. Uh, uh, work here to to address this and I I think Nate's proposal is the is the way to go.
Okay. Um, Karen, you're next.
Yeah, I was gonna agree and uh Fred, you beat me to it. I do think we have to push this forward. This is a really important way to. To uh mitigate the housing need that's that's pressing the whole town. But um, your proposal Nate that maybe the big Y CBS that we. At that particular place require a hundred percent on the ground floor. I think that's also that that would also keep it a little bit flexible because maybe those buildings want to put residential above them, but. Those stores would be preserved. I like that idea. I also think we should try to see if if this is a compromise that would be acceptable. In that it would save those particular uh very desirable commercial spaces. But wouldn't take this whole big chunk of land out of the overlay.
Okay, Karen. Uh, Jesse?
Thanks. Uh, while I completely agree with your sentiment, Karen, I have to point out. The data we have in front of us, which is. I believe not one of the stores that was in place in any of the lots that got developed in town has come back or been preserved. There are different things. But not one of those businesses is still in town. Liquor store moved down the hill, I think. But that's it. And and yeah, that's a real concern I would have also, right? We can think we're trying to preserve these same shops, but I think that's not realistic. Maybe another different supermarket would open, sure, but we it's really unknown.
Okay. Uh, Johanna?
Yeah, I was gonna, I guess, say the same thing. Um, you know, I think. Nate's scenario would ensure that there's commercial space there, but it doesn't ensure that big Y is there. And I don't think they're like, I have no idea. I'm not an architect, but I don't think we could just like. Add five stories on top of the existing structure. That's not how it works. Um, so there would be a transition time and it would probably be a different tenant. And if the intention is. You know, to save big Y and save the strip mall with its parking lot. Nate's proposed middle path does not accommodate that. It is my understanding.
It doesn't ensure it.
It doesn't ensure it. Thank you.
Right. Right. Well, you know, I mean, I think part of what we're talking about is. Uh. How much change are we willing to and, you know, allow? And. Uh, the the reason we were talking about change is that the current conditions are not satisfactory. So something, you know, if you think about how to change something, things will change. Uh, Nate, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, there's you could have other conditions in terms of limiting the use in that area too, but again. It doesn't necessarily ensure that it's big Y, right? You could limit the redevelopment to non-residential to certain use categories in our bylaw. That becomes pretty. Um, you know, pretty strict. Um, just changing subjects in terms of the overlay, I will say that since this was. Proposed and, you know, staff has discussed it with a few developers. The height, I think it had been asked if sixty-five feet was really enough to accommodate. Six floors and we've learned that it it isn't the way they they build now. So seventy feet is really what's necessary. So if this were. To move forward and we want six floors, I would recommend that we would have a seventy-foot. Maybe even. Seventy-one. I mean, they're right now they're at sixty-nine feet, so they do ten ten feet of residential floor and it's like sixteen to eighteen for a commercial. And so. For a residential floor, they frame it out, say a ten feet and they drop everything underneath that to run utilities. And so then you get an eight-foot ceiling. So they have two feet of. You know, framing of, you know, ductwork of whatever. So they really need ten feet. Uh, per residential floor and, you know, anywhere from fifteen, you know, fifteen is probably at the low end now to eighteen for commercial, the way they frame it with. You know, how they build, you know, first floor and then up above. So. Um. Yeah, I I think that sixty-five we thought might be possible, but I think even Bruce asked that and it's a it's a little. So it's a little low.
Yep. Uh, Jesse?
Thanks. Uh, I have to back up for one second. Maybe this is a question we can bring up next time if we're gonna discuss again.
I figured we'd talk about this maybe. Another twenty-five minutes, maybe another half hour.
Question for you, Nate. It's hard for me to tell just from looking at the plan. If we were to somehow not include the big Y lot, what percent difference are we talking about? And like, you know, if we projected all absolutely everything got built to six stories. How many units is that? And then without the big Y lot, what are we talking about? It looks to me maybe eight to ten percent. Difference. But again, if you can try and guesstimate that for us, it might be useful to to think about.
Yeah, I I think the the question would be if my screen's visible, the um. Let me actually do markup or uh through uh. Oh, where's my annotation control? Um, the big Y, the area is here. Here's the red line right here. And you see that? So the the property is here. The question would be, would you want to then exclude this corner here or is it really just? These properties. So, you know, then there's additional properties to the south of it along North Hampton Road. And so. You know, I think what we've said all along, going back to, you know, Mr. Slater's comments, there is a fair number. Of wetlands and resource areas here. And so, you know, it's pretty strategic in terms of how you have to develop. So four twenty-two Amity Street, which has been under review by the planning board. And the conservation commission, you know, has to spend, you know, their the conservation commission is still discussing it because they have, they really like to see some. You know, um, robust stormwater management programs and systems on site. And so, you know, at one point I said, well, you know, if we could get six projects here, a thousand beds. I mean, you know, excluding this, you're, you know, there is, it's a fair, it's a fairly large paved area. That could be redeveloped. I mean, I don't, I can't say what, you know, what's the. Upshot of that or the impact. I mean, I think. You know. Would this be the next site? To be developed? I'm not sure. I I, you know, my guess is if our big Y, I would be just pretty excited to have, you know, a lot of neighbors within walking distance that would be using my store. Um, but that might not, you know, be the kind of the rationale of the owners. Um, you know, big Y doesn't own the property, so there's different a different owner. Big Y is a a tenant. I mean, honestly, they might be in. A twenty-five or fifty-year commercial lease that runs until twenty forty. And so they're guaranteed space there for, you know. For another twenty, fifteen years. Uh, most commercial leases are for a minimum of twenty-five years, twenty, twenty-five. So I I don't know. That scenario. But yeah, I mean, so I get to me, the question would be if you're eliminating here, you know, is it? Is it just these properties or would it be something else? I mean, I, you know. You know, how how does that overlay look if we're missing those two properties? So I don't.
Yeah. Anybody have any thoughts about that? I mean, I. I I don't consider the. What is it? An auto store and uh. The ginger garden. I guess those are the two businesses along Route nine there. And um, is there, I don't remember if there's a third along there. But.
Yes, so here's the, here's what the properties are. The um, yeah, there's actually another auto parts store right here. It's um.
Yeah, I've always wondered why there were two so close together. But but anyway, those that none of those feel. Uh, like essential services uh that are not available. You know, somewhere else in town or or within a mile in in uh Hadley. So. you know, personally, I would probably keep them in the in the overlay. But but they're gonna feel like kind of sort, you know, outliers by being separated by the Big Y property. And maybe maybe that's not what we want. I guess, does anybody else have any comments about this at this point? I know when I went, when I was listening again, there was a comment from one member of the council saying, hey, gee, why didn't, why aren't you allowing apartment buildings? And, you know, we talked a lot about that. It seemed like in the end, we we wanted to try to have a relatively vibrant street life and didn't think we could get that with a sort of a non-public first-floor space that an apartment building would give you. I think it was that same member who said, well, do you really have to require commercial space on the first floor? Couldn't you just require the first floor to be built with the high floor-to-floor so that it could be commercial? But you can also allow residential there. And if the commercial market gets so such demand for commercial space, well, they could rip out the the residential and put in commercial or or use it for residential. You know, that's kind of an interesting idea. You know, you know, I could argue that both ways, I think, because it's it's important to get every single unit we can. But I I think it I shared the preference for having some street life down there. I don't see that I've jogged anybody to say anything. Oh, there's, there's, there's Johanna. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think the counselor in question said, no matter what, she was planning on putting forward an amendment to talk about apartments at CRC. So I imagine they'll have a conversation and we'll see where that shakes out. But, you know, I feel like we discussed it at length and you know, there are pros and cons to both approaches, but I think there's a reason we proposed mixed use.
Right.
There was one other piece that came up that I kind of flagged as a thing to make sure we touch on that was mentioned at town council. And it was this idea that there was concern that these buildings would be dorms and that they would only house students. I come back to the idea that housing is housing and that if we create off-campus housing that is mostly for students, it alleviates the pressure on neighborhoods. But I thought maybe it would be worth talking about that just a little bit as well.
Yeah, I I heard that as well. I was I was dismayed by that because it seemed to me that if you're gonna put students anywhere, this would be a great place to put them. And and, you know, and I and it it is better to have them here rather than somewhere else where they're they're the neighbors don't want them. You know, I will say in terms of the sort of relieving the pressure conversation, you know, I think we we shouldn't be really saying that this this area in and of itself would relieve the pressure. You know, there is probably thou- there are thousands of students who would like to live in Amherst and can't or haven't yet found a house to fight to live in. And so this is a good start. But I don't think it'll solve the problem. It won't immediately suck all the students out of the neighborhoods. It won't cause all the rents to drop and your property value to drop, which is comes with the rental market softening. But it's awfully, it 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 seems to me it's a shame if we don't take advantage of this area and the sort of political opportunity that it seems to offer. Jesse.
Thanks. Yeah, I largely agree. And I think it's really the same conversation that came up with the project in town last time. Think right now, any new units that get built, students are gonna move in. Whatever shape or size, whatever it takes, because there's so much pressure. And this is just the first step in getting us to have enough housing so that there's not pressure for single-family turnover. And that's what many of us are concerned about. That's also why, to me, if we make the overlay a little bit smaller without the corner lot, it's not a huge crisis. Yes, more units and more units. But again, this is probably just I hope the first in many of these type projects that we're gonna move toward.
Okay. Nate.
Yeah, I mean, to address the apartment concern, and we had discussed it, I think at one point last year, but you know, you could allow that a secondary building not facing the street could be an apartment building, right? So that the the front building that has the, you know, the frontage is is required to be a mixed-use building, but there's flexibility with a second building or if it has fewer, you know, a shorter frontage piece. And so, you know, there's probably ways to also you know, have, you know, different standards or considerations there. I just, you know, I was thinking that it doesn't, you know, if that's something that is discussed and the planning board wants to, maybe there's a way to allow, you know, two different uses. You know, depending on how you want to arrange them or think a site would be redeveloped. I mean, there might be limited opportunity where there's actually, you know, two different buildings, but it could be that, you know, maybe in three instances, you get an apartment building instead of you know, having a second mixed-use building.
Yeah, well, the lots are so deep, it does seem possible, at least just looking at the plan.
Right.
But there's so much wetlands back there that I think that we're still gonna be limited on how much of the site can be developed. So, you know, do you really think we can, there's some opportunity for that? Maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if I'm looking right, it's only it'd only be a few few a few sites, right, where that would actually be a possibility. It does, it wouldn't necessarily make sense to you know, especially if we have a mixed-use requirement upfront, typically a developer would want a certain amount of parking then, both for residence and then non-residential space. And so, you know, all those, all those factors contribute, right? So you could say, oh, let's allow a second building that's this. Well, that might not, even if we allow it, it might never happen because we're requiring a certain percentage of mixed use and they want certain amount of parking or you know, we want some open space too. So, yeah.
Okay. Jesse.
I guess I would be inclined not to consider that. Seems like it's overcomplicating what our vision was happen here. And I also feel like designers and architects are clever. They're gonna come up with, oh, we have a ten-foot-deep building in front that meets requirements and we have a big building in back that's an apartment or whatever scenario we haven't imagined that someone else will, that will really go against the point of what we're trying to do to to gain six more apartments or whatever the small gain would be. So to me, it feels like not necessarily a step. And yeah, as Johanna pointed out, we could see what the CRC comes up with.
So Nate, you know, we haven't, I'm not sure I've experienced this this process before. So we're gonna have our hearing. And I guess at the end of the hearing, we will write a recommendation of some sort, letter to the council. And CRC is gonna have its hearing. You know, if there are changes needed, what body does that before town council votes on it? Or does, you know, what kind of, how does it work? Or it's not like we're the House and and CRC is the Senate and we need to conference and agree on something that we then send to town council.
Yeah, so, you know, I think previously at one point, it's been a few years ago, there was a concurrent hearing of the Planning Board and CRC. And right now, you know, there's parallel tracks and you know, the idea would be the Planning Board could write its own recommendations and have its own draft bylaw that's separate than what the CRC recommends. You know, I think continuing the hearing, I, you know, I I talked to the CRC and said, you know, at some point, the Planning Board and CRC could actually continue it to the same date. And so that, you know, if not your next one, but the third meeting could be where both boards meet at the same time. So you can have a conversation together and then still develop separate recommendations and a bylaw, right? So in the end, the Planning Board will have a set of recommendations to council. The CRC will have a set of recommendations. And it could be on the same bylaw or it could be on the bylaw that the Planning Board thinks you know, is most appropriate and the CRC might have something different. And so yeah, so for me right now, you know, if moving forward, we could, you know, continue it to a date certain and then if there's changes, we want to see like the building height or if there's setbacks or other things, we had a few points I noted, but, you know, those changes could be made. And then, you know, if there's other comments or questions that come in, those could be discussed. So you know, that's where, that's how I, you know, I continue on with your discussion. If there's, you know, things that need to be changed, you'd like to see changed, that's changed. And then at some point, we can coordinate with the the CRC. So, you know, they're need to pick this up in November. My idea was to continue it past their first hearing date so that then, you know, there's an opportunity here where they discussed and then the Planning Board could discuss it again.
Okay. So let's see, November.
I, there's a November twentieth meeting.
Yeah. Is there, is there a November sixth meeting too?
There is, but I don't, the CRC won't have heard this before the sixth.
Okay.
And then, so to lay out the schedule, there's a December fourth meeting of the Planning Board. And that looks like it would be a hearing for the high school track and for the preliminary subdivision plan for four twenty-two Amity. And then it's December eighteenth, which I still have as could be University Drive. So it could be November twentieth. And, you know, if there isn't much to talk about, it's a short discussion and then it could be continued again to December eighteenth. There's a few other things that may happen on November twentieth as well. But, you know, those two dates, November twentieth and December eighteenth are available. And then, you know, and then with the holidays, you know, they're
Right.
I wanna say like, let's wait until January. I think we should have at least another discussion.
Yeah, well, we seems like we will definitely still be talking about this next year. Okay, all right. Are there any more comments from the board for for this topic this evening? All right, are there any more comments from the public on this topic? I saw a momentary hand that then disappeared. Okay, let's bring Jonathan Slater back.
I guess the only thing that I would like to make sure and I appreciate all this conversation is that I did get this notice for this particular overlay, but I heard other comments about University Drive. How do I make sure that we get updates on when future meetings are impacting this area? Is there some way that can be a part of that communication moving forward?
So we send out notices when we start for for when the hearings start, but I Nate or Pam, do we send out notices for each continuation or we rely on the a butter to pay attention to what we talk about and when we continue the hearing in in the meeting. Is that right?
Right. So the hearing has to be continued to a time and date certain, which would need to happen before we would continue on with the meeting here. So typically, we don't, we don't also, we don't notify butters or property owners of zoning changes. This case was different because it was a discreet number of property owners affected by the proposed overlay. And so, you know, we have your name and, you know, we typically recommend someone to subscribe to Amherst. On the website, you can subscribe to be notified when agendas are posted. And I think you could single out if it's just the Planning Board. So if any, you know, Planning Board is talking about zoning, you'd get a notification that an agenda was posted. It's not specific to University Drive, but you then have to look at the agenda. Typically, staff would in promise keeping track of who wants to be notified at every meeting.
No, I truly respect that and also that extra comment. I'll go ahead and I'll get signed up. That's all I need to understand. So thank you.
Jonathan, the other thing is, before we're done tonight, we're gonna name the date and the time where we're gonna continue talking about this. So if you're able to stay with us until we close this topic for this evening, which isn't the end of the meeting, you'll hear when we're gonna come back and talk about it again.
I appreciate the extra time to share that information with me. Thank you.
Sure. I was also gonna say, Jonathan, my email is malloyn, M A L L O Y N, amherstma.gov. And you can send me an email.
I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I don't see any other hands from the public and at this point, it sounds like we should continue the hearing to November twentieth. Are we gonna go at seven oh five again or maybe seven o'clock since we had to go five minutes earlier? Can can, will that work for you, Nate?
Yeah, yeah, I, my, yeah, that's fine.
Seven o'clock will work. Okay.
No, we start later. We just can't start earlier than a posted time.
Right, right. Well, I'm just thinking we should continue to seven o'clock on on the twentieth. Okay, so I I'd like to make a motion that we continue this hearing to November twentieth at seven P M. Jesse.
A second.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wanna talk about that motion or anything else about this topic? Johanna.
Sorry if I missed this, but has CRC scheduled their meeting on it yet?
Nate?
I thought it was gonna take place on the twelfth or the nineteenth, so they would have that discussion before.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
I do see hands raised.
Now I see a couple of hands from CRC members. Pam, you got your name, your hand up first. We'll go ahead with you. Hello, Pam.
Hi, Pam Rooney. The CRC hearing on University Drive is going to be held on November twelve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And if Mr. Slater wants to be notified of that, that would be great.
Okay, so November twelfth, what time is your meeting?
I think it's six thirty P M.
Okay. All right. I don't see any other hands by anyone. We have a motion to continue and a second. In that case, we'll go we'll go on and vote on continuing. Starting with you, Fred.
I.
Thank you, Jesse.
Hi.
And Johanna.
Hi.
All right, Karen.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Five in favor, two absent. All right, time is eight nineteen. Seems like it's time to do, take a break, maybe? People wanna do that? Take a five-minute break? And then we can come back and Nate, we can talk about accessory dwelling units.
Yes.
Okay, eight nineteen, come back at eight twenty-four and turn your video back on. Okay, time is eight twenty-five, if you are back from your. Break, if you could turn on your video and let me know you're back. And Pam, I think, uh, we need to move Pam Rooney back to. Uh, the attendees. And Jonathan Slater, too. Okay, it looks like all the board and staff are back. So time now is eight twenty-six, we'll go on with the next item on the agenda. And this is in a discussion of accessory dwelling units. And introduction to the state changes regarding accessory dwelling units and possible changes to the local. Zoning bylaw, uh, with Nate Malloy.
Sure, hi, everyone, um. Yeah, the state, you know, passed some new, a new definition and. Kind of permitting requirements for accessory dwelling units that become effective. February second, and. Uh, you know, a number of communities are looking at changing their bylaw at town meeting, or, you know, through council now. Uh, some are actually waiting. The state might, uh, they thought it would be the fall, it might come a little bit later, um, to issue guidance on how, how this works. And so. You know, I think on the, the idea of it's really simple, right? Allow accessory dwelling units up to nine hundred square feet by right. Uh, so it just, it's just a building permit, there's no, you know, land use permit required. Uh, and then the legislation has some language about reasonable regulations. And possibly allowing more than one on a property. Uh, and, you know, there's different interpretations about what that means. Uh, and for Amherst, you know, we permitted accessory dwelling units up to a thousand square feet, and so. Uh, you know, what, you know, the idea is that that no longer complies with state regulation because it's bigger. Um, and so there's just different ideas about, you know, how all this interacts. Uh, I've attended one webinar, and there's another one coming up. I think, I, I, you know, I, I forget when, I just registered today, but, uh, I think in the next two weeks, that will, supposed to offer more guidance. Um, and so some of it really becomes, you know, really technical about. How do you permit and allow accessory dwelling units, and so. You know, for Amherst, our bylaw. You know, a fair amount is compliant with the state law, but some isn't, right? We require owner occupancy, which cannot be required. Um, we require a special permit in some instances, which, um, you know, it wouldn't be allowed. Uh, and so, you know, I think for Amherst. You know, come next February, people will probably be applying for accessory dwelling units, and so. You know, right now, the zoning board has denied a few requests for a duplex on the property. Because an owner wouldn't live there. And so it's very likely that those owners would come back and say, well, I'm just gonna do a four-bedroom A D U. You know, it's, it'll be a small, you know, it'll be nine hundred square feet. But they, that's allowed by right, as opposed to, you know, say a whole duplex in terms of how big the unit they were proposing, but. Essentially, they could get the same number of occupants through this mechanism as opposed to a special permit. And so, you know, yes.
I'm sorry, you can't do four bedrooms in nine hundred square feet.
Why not? Or four, four, four tenants, four occupants.
Think, you, I mean, you, wouldn't you need more room than that for, to have it? Tolerable in terms of rent bathrooms and kitchens and living space?
I mean, what if you'd had two bedrooms and you doubled up in the bedrooms?
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, any, anyways, I think. You know, whether or not that, you know, it's four, whether it's three, but, you know, I think there's an idea that in Amherst, people would take advantage of it. Um, and I, you know, and honestly, I, you know, I, what I found online is, you know, um. Weston has a, has a bylaw they're proposing, which is pretty good. Natick has gone through it, uh, or is going through it, and they have a bylaw, it's pretty complicated. And then some towns just have a bylaw that basically says we'll allow A D Us according to the state definition. And they don't say anything else, and so. You know, I, what I had sent in, uh, preparation for this meeting was just general considerations for. You know, we do have to change the definition of accessory dwelling unit, we could have a local definition as well. You know, how do we wanna permit it? Uh, and do we wanna have some reasonable regulations? Which is really, you know, we still have our dimensional standards and our building envelope, our lot coverage. All those things can remain, we can have additional, um, kind of massing, or, uh, kind of some simple design guidelines. And it's yet to be tested in terms of when, when does it become unreasonable? You know, um, some limited to one floor, some say two, some have a height requirement that's different than what they have in the bylaw. You know, all those things could be impacted, for instance, if you have it to only be one floor, and someone has an existing two, you know. A garage, and they wanna put a unit above that, is that now a two-story one that's not allowed, and so. You know, it's all these little pieces that have to get worked out. Um, what I, what I thought is that, um, for November twentieth. If, I don't think I can get it for the sixth, but I'd wanna have, you know, a start of a draft, some draft language, or start bringing the pieces together. Um, you know, one idea for Amherst is to allow. Uh, A D Us that are a thousand square feet, so we already allow them. To allow them in a, in a new bylaw, through a permitting process, so they don't become. You know, non-conforming, right? So then that way, they're still there, so we, you know, they stay there, so. You know, non-conforming use becomes kind of this special thing in state law and zoning, and so if we, if there's a way to. Keep the ones we permitted, which may be a few dozen. To not become non-conforming, then, you know, we would want to write that into the bylaw. And so, you know, the state's hoping that this A D U bylaw will, you know, encourage the production of, you know, thousands of units. Um, that are, because of their size, are, you know, modestly priced or rented, right? They're not. Gonna be capital A affordable, but the hope is that they provide some housing. Uh, and housing, you know, opportunity and choice, and. You know, I think that's true, I think, you know, in some communities, um, you know, they might have, you know, might be using ways they hadn't expected, we can. Uh, limit it and not allow short-term rentals. We don't, you know, I'm not sure that's a, a concern. Um, it might be for some, but that's something also to consider. You know, do we really want to, you know, have that kind of regulation in place? Uh, like I said, the permitting path, and that, what's reasonable regulations? You know, there's septic. Um, issues in some communities, and there's, you know, some areas in Amherst that don't have town, um, you know, water or sewer, so there has to, they have to meet, you know, state. Requirements for that. Um, we want some bulk and height regulations. Um, we cannot, you know, require owner occupancy, at least for the first A D U. And we can't have certain parking requirements, uh, if the property is within. A half mile, they call it a transit station, that, again, that's, people are asking, like, does that mean a bus stop? So does that mean, say, like, any P V T A bus route in town? You know, does that buffer apply to every P V T A bus route, and that hasn't been clarified? But I think, you know, I think it's for the planning board to discuss, you know, do we want to? You know, make a few modest changes to the existing bylaw, if you want to rewrite a bylaw. Or do we don't wanna do nothing, and just, you know, essentially, the building commissioner would issue building permits. Uh, for. A D Us that comply with the state definition on February second, and that. Also comply with what we have in the bylaw that isn't inconsistent with the state. Uh, so it's not like we don't have anything in place, we have some things in place, but. For instance, someone wants to build a detached unit. And it's a certain size, and, and our bylaw right now would say it's a special permit, it would just be a building permit. Yeah, and then, you know, whatever general requirements we have, that aren't in conflict with the state could still be applied. Which, you know, isn't, you know, there's a few, but not all of them.
Uh, Nate, uh, what does Rob think we should do?
He thinks we should, uh, get something moving. So K P Law, uh, you know, as a town attorney, they represent, you know, um. A number of communities across Massachusetts, you know, it could be like fifty. Uh, Weston is one of their communities. They provided two draft bylaws, one was very simple, one was, uh, kinda similar to what we have. Uh, and so, you know, like I said, there's so many different variations in what communities are doing, some are probably cautious about what's unreasonable. So, you know, can we? You know, say, we don't, we don't allow more than one A D U on a property, or if we do, it has to be by special permit. You know, I will say, I think it was Weston, or Natick said you could, you could, they would allow two. By right, if both are, if the combined square footage of both is nine hundred square feet. Or if one was completely contained within a dwelling, in existing dwelling, and one could be attached or detached, and so. You know, they're almost encouraging this kind of two A D Us at a time. Because an A D U can't be, uh, can only be with a single-family house, it can't be with a duplex or any other use, it's only. Applicable to a single-family, uh, you know, property, and so. You know, it's almost like if you allowed the, the two that way. Someone would come in and do that, and. To me, it's almost like you're doing a converted dwelling with an A D U, but the way it's permitted is through an A D U. And, you know, you limit size, and one has to be completely contained within the existing dwelling. I mean, to, so for me, this community is thinking like, wow, this is a great way to actually add units. And not really change the physical mass and character of properties, right? I don't know how often that would be used, you know, I don't. Yep, how easy is it to create an A D U within an existing structure? If it meets certain code requirements, I will say, I've probably had half a dozen calls. Of property owners or prospective, uh, owners asking about this. Uh, I know Rob's had a number two. You know, just questions, two people came in today asking what's gonna happen, you know, they're curious about creating one. Um, I don't know if it's new or within an existing structure, but. You know, I, I tell people that unfortunately, they have to hire an architect, right? So if they have an existing garage, and they think it could be an A D U. You know, there's utility connections, uh, there's, you know, building code requirements, fire separation. Possible setbacks, and so. A lot of things are possibilities, it's like, you know, how much can actually happen? Um, you know, I think you could require, for instance, limiting curb cuts. One town's taking that approach, that you use the existing driveway and curb cut to serve the A D U. So you don't get all these secondary curb cuts and driveways that go to the A D U. Um, you know, they can run utilities from the existing single-family home. Right, so they could run their sewer and connect through the home, it doesn't have to be a separate sewer connection, and so. You know, I don't know how much detail we wanna go into, but. You know, if we, you know, we allow A D Us now, right? We have three categories, completely contained, attached, and detached. And essentially, they're almost allowed, uh, by site planner review or administrative approval, and so to me. I would make it as clean as possible and say it's by building permit. And then if we wanna have some additional. Uh, stipulations, it would be by site planner review, I don't know if we really need a special permit, um, process. Uh, but, you know, I think we could have standards and conditions in the bylaw that help. Regulate certain things. Um, and if we really are concerned about getting multiple A D Us. Then maybe we prohibit that, or we do make that by special permit, but that would be the one instance where. Uh, you know, you might need a special permit, you know, is someone gonna come in and propose like an A D U village? Uh, you know, I don't. I mean, it's a lot to build an A D U, right? I, I, to be honest, it's. It's a, you know, it's a small house, it's a small dwelling unit. Um. I, you know, I don't envision someone coming in and trying to build so many because you have building envelopes and utility connections, but you never know.
Okay, so, um. Nate, it sounds like you're planning to come back to us in November with a draft.
Yeah, and you know, if the planning board has any, any general thoughts, or if you've heard things or read things, you know, things for staff to consider as well.
Yep. Jesse.
Thanks, I was just wondering if you could remind us the process for this, goes to council, and then. Maybe it comes back or not, just because February is gonna be here pretty quick.
Yeah, I know, it'd be the kind of the similar process as University Drive, you know, could we turn around a draft? Or a, you know, a zoning amendment, and bring it to council. Quickly enough that it's ready by February, I mean, that's a really. Quick turnaround. Um.
Yeah, we may not wanna continue that hearing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I was surprised when, um, one of the attorneys at K P Law said, oh, just wait till the spring. And see what other communities do, and when the state should have more guidance, but. I think that leaves us. You know, a window where we don't really have certain regulations in place that may account for. Permits that come in, you know, I, you know, like, I don't know, Jesse, was it you who said, right, developers can, are creative, I'm assuming we're gonna have some creative requests that come in.
Yeah, and, sorry, that's what I was thinking about, it's like, do we, do we wanna have something in place?
Yes.
Or almost in place by the time they start coming in with projects.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, Amherst, we could, you know, at first I was thinking I'd just strike the owner occupancy from the bylaw. Change the A D U size to nine hundred square feet, and, uh. You know. Only require a special permit if it's over, you know, if it's, if it's over nine hundred but less than a thousand. And then we've, um, there's maybe one more little change, we could, we've almost complied with the state. Definition, and maybe, you know, that could be one route, I just feel like we're. You know, it gets a little confusing if other pieces are still not, um. You know, compliant with the state law, but. You know, it could be that I just, you know, we do that route, and then also. I was thinking we'd rewrite just that section of the bylaw. I was thinking we'd rewrite just that section of the bylaw, just to make it clean and just, you know, remove what's there and replace with a new one.
Yeah, I, I would agree, Nate, um, I think where the. Where the rubber meets the road in Amherst is in a, uh, in a realm which. Unfortunately, it looks like the state has prohibited us from acting and that is in terms of owner occupancy. And that is incredibly alarming, uh, in the town of Amherst because. When you remove owner occupancy, you remove the single most effective method of policing. Anti-social behavior. Uh, the, the consequences of, uh. Of this and, and the potential consequences in, 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 in Amherst are huge. Uh, but there's probably nothing that we can do about it, um, and, uh. Short of a home rule petition to. Uh, see if we can get it amended, um. But yeah, I agree that we should probably try to be in place with something in the beginning of February.
Yeah, I mean, one community didn't require owner occupancy, but they did require, um, at least a twelve-month lease. Or, you know, if it was rented, a twelve-month lease for the unit or units, um. Which is different than saying it can't be a short-term rental. And so, you know, I don't know, you know, if that is voted on by their town meeting, how that would, you know, how the state will review that eventually, right? To say it's not a short-term rental means, you know, doesn't mean you have to have, have a twelve-month lease or a.
Will the state review you're talking about, will that be through? Litigation in the courts or is there some state agency that'll review this?
Yeah, so you know, I think that there are a number of town meetings that are in their special fall town meeting are voting on a bylaw. And then it'll go to the Attorney General's office for review. And so it's at that point that, you know, the state, when they're reviewing the, the article, you know, the, you know, the proposed bylaw, they might. Make an opinion that it's not, uh, consistent with the legislation, so. I don't know what kind of approach they'll take, right? So it could be that there, there is, you know, thirty fall town meetings happening across. Massachusetts at this time where bylaws are being adopted for ADUs. And, you know, for, for, you know, for town meeting, then they review those, so they'll actually review the language. Um, and I don't know if they'll take the approach of. You know, saying some are not compliant with state law because they over, you know, they provide unreasonable regulations. I think, you know, other communities are waiting to see, right? I think the hope is then by, unfortunately, if you wait, you don't have anything in place by February second. Right? So it's like, we could wait a few months. See if there's all these determinations made and then come up with a bylaw. But then we'll, you know, we'll, you know, that, by that point, it probably wouldn't be ready until spring, right? It just. You lose that window.
Fred?
Uh, yeah, I think we do both, um, we try to be in place for February and. We keep actively thinking about it. And, uh, you know, if something moves on the state level, then. You know, we can move, you know, in, 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 uh, our council.
Yep, that. Sounds like the right approach. Okay, Nate, anything else you wanted from us this evening?
No, that's good. Yeah, so I, I think it's November fourth, there's another webinar I'll go to that should have some guidance, so that. Gives us enough time to have something, you know, hopefully for the twentieth.
Okay. Great. All right, next we have a gen, what we called a general housing discussion. Um, Fred, your hand is still up. I don't, I don't know if you wanted to say anything before we moved on.
I just put it back up, uh, and it was in response to Nate, uh. Uh, Nate, could you, uh, I, I'm assuming that members of the planning board could attend that webinar. Could you make that available to planning board members, the timing and so forth on that?
Yeah, I'll forward you a link. You'll have to register. It's pretty easy, um, and then it's a Zoom webinar. It's hosted by. Uh, actually the state, uh, and I think, um, MMA.
If, if, if I'm, if I'm around, I think I would like to, uh, participate or at least be.
Yeah, I think it's ten AM on November fourth.
Okay. So next, uh. November fourth, that would be Monday, right?
Yeah, I've seen it was further away, but I guess it's only Monday.
Monday, yeah.
I was thinking it was, yeah.
Okay, yeah, send it out soon.
Yeah, yeah, it just came through this afternoon at like three or four, so, um.
Okay. Fred, your hand is up, is that a legacy? Okay, great. Okay, moving on to the general housing discussion, item five on the agenda, the time is eight forty-seven. Um, this was my attempt to make a time during our meeting for us to talk about some of the same things. That the housing subcommittee has been talking about. Uh, hopefully, uh, with wider participation of the committee. Or of the board, uh, obviously we don't have everybody tonight, um, and. Uh, so, you know, uh, Jesse, I gave you a few hours, uh, notice that this was on the a- agenda. Um, it sounded like last time you said you were talking a lot about trying to define a student rental. Uh, maybe you could fill us in on kinda how you were approaching that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, so not much has progressed, uh, we, we're not able to meet last week just for forum reasons, uh, we're meeting on the thirteenth, I think is next. And, yeah, so we had spent a fair bit of time in the first meetings talking about. Do we wanna try and have a student home definition on our books somehow? And what the utility would be and if so, what would that definition look like? And pretty much where the subcommittee landed was, yes, we'd like to try and. Do that as a information gathering tool, so. The last couple of times the full board discussed these types of issues. Um, a big piece of what felt like was missing was data, right? Understanding where the student homes are in the town. So that we can start to think about neighbors that might have too much density or different, even to, to begin to discuss strategies to mitigate. What we think is too much, you have to know what there is. So that was really the motivation in coming up with a definition that could potentially be adopted by the town somewhere in the, the, the bylaws. Um, what we ended on and, uh, could send it to Nate, who can send it to everybody, was basically. Stealing the language from somewhere else that has had it on their bylaw for quite some time and presumably. If it was challenged, it stood up, or maybe it wasn't challenged, we don't know, but that felt like an easy route. And so we made some minor modifications, uh, but it's basically just describing what we consider a student home. And it's a certain, so I think it was two or more occupants that are, uh, attending. University or college, I can't remember the exact words. Again, I could pull it up or, or I can just send it around for you all to look at. We haven't really progressed much further, what to do with this yet, because, um, we were debating. What happens if we try and push this forward without a purpose? We're concerned that the, there will be big objection to it, because it'll be viewed as just a. Tool in a, to be used in a negative way, meaning an anti-student piece of. Definition. That's not at all our intention, but we're concerned that that will be how it's viewed. So I think where we ended last was trying to come up with a proposed use as information gathering. Rather than just, yes, let's add this definition.
Were you thinking that this would be added to like the questionnaire that you fill out for the rental registration bylaw? So it, so it wouldn't be a definition that's part of our zoning code. It would be something that would be more broadly in the town bylaw.
Correct, more broadly in the town bylaw. And we did discuss whether we could just simply add it to the, the registration form and. Nate, help me remember where we landed on that. It was basically. The thought was it, it wouldn't give us much more information than we're already getting, because that's been relying on the registrant's. Accurate, honest answer, right? And so I think we already asked on there number of occupants, right?
Yeah, the billing commissioner said it could be added to the, you know, it's our, our online software for rental permitting, but. You know, it's a kind of an on, you know, an honorary system, so they, you know, an applicant doesn't have to indicate. Um, but we thought we could add it, um. You know, uh, yeah, I, I think the new rental registration, um, you know, the online software. Is easier to complete, and so, you know, we thought that that's a good place to have this live at first, because it. You know, um, it auto renews and it's capturing who's already renting, um, and so it is a, it can be a, it could be. A data collection point, um, you know, in addition to what the, the sys, the system's already collecting, but I, I. You know, I, I do think it's important, so you know, I was talking to, uh, Rob Moore about it now in terms of how many, you know, single-family homes or duplexes are. Part of the rental registration. And then we can determine, I think we do ask how many occupants, but we don't actually know, you know, how many are. Say students or undergraduate students, and so we could, you know, probably take a guess, but, you know, you know, or if the home is rented, you know. Who knows, right? If it's all the occupants are students or some or have, you know. But we know the occupants, uh, so this could just be another point to help understand the data, um, but.
Yeah, if I can add another point, what, what gets really tricky that we've discussed at length also is. You know, one of the goals we, the subcommittee stated for itself was to try and increase permanent residential rentals. Not just to limit student rentals, like that's not really the goal, it's to encourage and increase permanent resident rentals as well. And so that's also part of trying to define what's a student home. And, and that, so it just, it, it feels pretty tricky to navigate how to gather the information. Where this definition should live and how it would be used, right? So that's where we're at with that discussion.
All right, are there other topics you guys have talked about?
Um, we discussed the ADU law a, a bit, a couple of times. We've sort of been waiting for more information from the state. Obviously, we just discussed that here, uh, we were on our agenda and Nate can probably speak more to this is. Revisiting, I don't know if it was a plan or just a discussion that was had some number of years ago about increasing density at already existing multi-use. Multi-family, uh, sites around town. Um, and, and rezoning those for how much higher density, seemed like, I mean, that, that to me seemed like a no-brainer, like why wouldn't we do that? As a way, it's just some.
That could be the next thing we take on.
So we were gonna try and look at that as a subcommittee to bring a proposal to the full board, um, or at least flesh out the discussion a little bit. Um, and then, you know, on the back end of our agenda, which we haven't really gotten to yet, the subcommittee was again, starting to think about the next potential overlay place. Yeah, so that, that really sums up what we've been up to.
Okay, so is it, would it? It sounds like you have another meeting scheduled on thirteenth. Um, is, if we can make a regular time available during, in this meeting, is it? Would that help you not, you know, would that make you guys feel like we, you don't have to meet separately or? I mean.
I think so. I, I would certainly welcome fewer meetings, you know, we, we have a, we have a, you know, we have some difficulty scheduling, just like everything else. Yeah, I think that would be a big plus.
Okay, um, so Nate, you know, based on what you can see coming up in the next couple of months. Um, do you think it's? Uh, it's feasible for us to try to carve in, you know, forty-five minutes or an hour out of each meeting? For a housing conversation, you know?
Yeah, yeah, so I was gonna say that, um, well, just to respond to Jesse, I think back to what the housing subcommittee was talking about too is. You know, if, and it was mentioned in the Conference of Housing Study from two thousand fifteen. You know, if there's areas where you have flexible zoning or allow multi-unit development, could you have, you know, stricter regulations in some part of town? And so some communities that, you know, Bruce had looked at and the committee has talked about briefly, you know, in some areas they. You know, regulate pretty strictly, you know, the number of unrelated occupants in a unit and other things, but then in other parts of the community. They actually encourage, you know, say, student housing, because these are all college towns he's looking at, right? So they're taking, you know. Kind of a multifaceted approach, so it's not just like, well, let's just do one thing. They're trying to do a few different things to accommodate. You know, different users and, and, you know, residents in the community, so I think that, you know, it is always something to consider. Um, you know, I think Doug, you mentioned, right, that the U- University Drive could help it a bit to me, right? That's a starting point and there's other things that could be happening. So to your question about the next meetings, November sixth right now, uh, four twenty-two Amity Street has been continued, the site plan review. I will say that the Conservation Commission continued their hearing to November thirteenth on that, and it might, um, result in. Uh, some site changes and so the idea was to just. Not even take any testimony or anything on the sixth and just continue it to a date certain, possibly November twentieth. Or December, into December, so that basically leaves November sixth, um, completely open for, you know, which is just, you know, a week away, but. Open for housing discussion. Uh, November twentieth, I had, you know, four twenty-two Amity, the site plan review. Uh, we have the, um. The public hearing and then the ADU bylaw, so, you know, November twentieth is kind of busy. December fourth, there's two site plan review or two projects. And then December eighteenth is, um, pretty much, uh, open at this point as well, so, you know, November sixth and December eighteenth. Uh, you know, and even at the other meetings, it seems like there could be time to have some top, some discussion like this.
Okay. All right, well, I guess the other thing that's coming to mind is early on when we started talking about. What eventually turned into the overlay, we met in person and we kinda sat around a table and. People seemed to find that. Productive, um, you know. Is that necessary, I guess is the question, um, or can we have a fruitful conversation about? You know, where to go next, uh, over Zoom. Jesse?
I mean, I think I enjoy being in person, but at the same time, I think we could probably do it over Zoom, would be my thought. Especially if we're gonna pick off discrete chunks for each meeting and not just have a very open, let's look at them at.
Okay, well, um, would it be reasonable for us to say, well, maybe the next thing we might talk about? In that slot would be areas with multi-family housing, we could upzone.
I think that's great.
Yeah, uh, Johanna?
I think, I mean, I guess. I'd be interested in having a slightly broader conversation about like, what are the options for the next thing? That we could pick off, because East Amherst and like that Route nine corridor was also. Kind of the next thing in a way, so. I do think it makes sense to pick one, but I'd be interested in having a conversation about the pros and cons.
Okay, Jesse?
Yeah, I don't disagree. This one, this other idea that Nate brought to us seemed really, potentially really straightforward, everyone was on board. That's why it feels like next to me, because it might be a relatively short process, which, which I would love.
Well, in that, you're an optimist. Okay, so maybe we'll put that on the, that on the agenda for, for the sixth, uh, just next week. And, um, I guess we'll be finalizing the agenda for that probably tomorrow. Uh, Johanna?
Given that that has been kind of discussed and is a little bit of an idea, is there anything in writing? That we could read ahead of time, Jesse, that you know of?
Uh, no, Nate, you could forward what you sent to us. It was just the plan, some, uh, a little bit of a plan from whenever it was, twenty fifteen.
Yeah, well, whatever, I'd send a few things to the housing subcommittee that can become part of the packet. And so, yeah, the town, uh, the planning department at that time had said, you know, look at. Uh, properties that had, you know, multi-unit development. And could they, could there be an overlay to allow them to redevelop at a much greater density? And some of that, the reasoning there is that a lot of those apartment complexes were permitted and then the town changed the zone. And then the town changed the zoning, so now they're pre-existing or now they're non-conforming. So they can densify anyways. Under the bylaw, uh, through a special permit, but could you? You know, encourage it as a site plan review. You know, again, with some standards and conditions in place, and so. You know, there's, there's been a few property owners over the last few years, I guess, who come to town and say they could, they'd be willing to do something like that. Some wouldn't, because, you know, we've actually, I've spoken to one about it, um. And they. They said maybe, but you know, in terms of taking units offline for construction and then phasing. You know, some property owners just don't want to take on that kind of complex project, right? They, you know, it makes sense in the long run, but I think there's a few that I, you know, Rob said there's a few that periodically check in and. Say, you know, can I do something with my property? I'd love to, you know, densify, and right now there's not really a good way to do that, so.
Okay.
That was kind of the idea of it, it never made it. You know, past, you know, some there, at the time, there's a zoning subcommittee, there's discussions. Like Jesse said, there were some maps and maybe some notes, but nothing. Formal ever, you know, came out of it.
Okay. Um, one thing that I was wondering, uh, with the, is there? Now that you have the rental registration bylaw. Uh, is there a way? With the magic of GIS to translate? The information about where rental units are onto a map? So that we could see just how is rental. Distributed across town, is it really all around UMass, or is it everywhere?
Yeah, good question, it will be mapped. Um, you know, what I've been told is that there's often a lag. Between when, um, you know, permit, you know, we, the way we. Have accepted applications, they say they're due in July, but we allowed, you know, some grace period, and then there's a few months where. Uh, the town doubled checks, and so usually we'd say by. You know, end of year is accurate, uh, but yeah, the idea is that then it could be mapped. I will say about right now, um, I think there's like seven, almost eight hundred, I think it's like seven hundred ninety, single fam- single family homes are. Registered with the rental registration program. Meaning that it's more than just one bedroom that's rented out. And there's two hundred duplexes. Uh, so, um, and I think a hundred of those duplexes are, um. You know, half are owner occupied and half aren't. And so, you know, that's, you know, essentially nine hundred. You know, you could call them single family, one and two family. Units that are, you know, probably the entire unit is rented, right? All all bedrooms.
Yeah.
And that should be able to be mapped. Um, so you know, what? The idea is that our, um, the software is tied to, you know, we tie it to an address and a property ID, so eventually that should all be mapped. And it could, you know, there could be some symbology to, you know. Show the different variations, if we start getting more granular data, you know, you could hopefully represent that too as well.
Well, that would be great. Uh, Jesse?
I would just add. Whenever it was a year ago, when I first joined the board and I put together those percentile numbers for neighborhoods. There was a big disconnect from the registration numbers and the numbers on the property cards where I got that data, so. Just putting that caveat out there for everyone to keep in the back of their minds, like. Seven hundred ninety registered now, if I remember correctly, there were eleven hundred or so on the book from somewhere. So that's a pretty big delta percentage wise. That we'll have to, we'll always contend with that, that it is what it is.
Yeah, I would say that the rental registration moving forward. Um, will become more accurate, you know, I think what the town does is it takes. Anything that was a rental registration property a year or two before, and then they will follow up if they don't register the next year, right? So then they try to make sure they're always, uh, accurate. With the assessor's information, you know, it's a. Whether there's a change, you know, the property changes hands or is every so many years, three to five years where they. Will kind of reassess the property, and so some of that, that information is outdated. And unfortunately, I don't know if it'll ever be synchronized. In a way like Jesse, you know, we were asking, I, you know, I was trying to work with him to map it. And it was just, you know, it's too inconsistent, um. You know, and the margin of error was. Pretty big, and so it was hard to say, well, let's look at this information, I think it's. Might be helpful, but you know, knowing that it could be a twenty to thirty percent. You know, margin of error, what does that mean in a given area, um, but.
Okay, Jesse?
Just wanted to say, to be clear, that was in no way. A criticism of the town and what they're doing, I mean, it was just an acknowledgement of probably. People choosing not to use the registration, that's all.
Okay.
Oh, no, I mean, no, it's fair, right? There's an older, for instance, there's an older property for sale that the assessor lists is a three family. And it was a three family probably a number of years ago, but in the last so many years, it's really only been a duplex. And it's just, you know, the assessor's records never caught up with that change, right? So this. Area that was a third unit just kind of became part of one of the units. Uh. But, yeah, so I mean, it's, it's just, you know, we don't, the assessor doesn't go out and inspect units, you know, so consistently to know that, um.
Okay. All right, great, um, it's nine oh six, maybe we can go on to the next item. Nate, you were gonna talk about the housing production plan.
Yeah, so the, um, you know, the town's hired Barrett Consulting Group, Judy Barrett and her firm is. Working through a housing production plan, they've had, you know, some meetings. Uh, they've met maybe with some of you. They're conducting the needs assessment right now. And that doc, that portion of the plan should be completed in the next two weeks and would would be available for review. Uh, there also will be a, um. An online survey for for residents. And community members to take, that should be ready by the end of the week, so that'll be available online. Ask a number of questions in terms of, you know, and, uh, you know, um, a respondent's housing. Situation, you know, demographics and what they think are needs for housing in the community, what they'd like to see, so I'd encourage everyone to take it and. Forwarded along to everyone. Um, and I think the needs assessment, you know, was a fifty to sixty page. Piece of the plan that, you know, really is trying to understand the housing market in Amherst, and then the need for affordable housing. So Housing Production Plan is really focused on, you know, capital A affordable need, but they're, they also look at other. Um, housing needs in the town. I think eventually the planning board has to send a letter with the plan to the state if we want to get it approved. And so the idea is that the plan would be done by next July. And so, you know, I just wanted to give a periodic update to the planning board. And eventually, you know, you'd probably be asked to review the plan and then vote to. I don't know if it, uh, approve it or. Um, I I forgot the exact language, but then that, you know, your letter and vote would go along with the plan to the state, so. Uh, and there is, I think it's December tenth or third, I'm not sure yet, but on either of those dates, there'll be a, um. A number of in-person meetings to discuss the, um, the plan, mo- most of the needs assessment and the results of the community survey, and so. You know, the public is more than welcome to attend. I'm not sure, we we haven't finalized the date, we're hoping to do that in the next week, but so it's either the. The third or the tenth, and there'll be a series of workshops, you know, from two to six, um. You know, in in town, whether it's in Town Hall or in another meeting space, but.
Okay. All right, um, thank you, Nate. Next, let's see, we went through old business, we went through new business. Form A and R, ZBA, SPA, SPP. SUB. Uh, we went through the committee and liaison reports. All right, we're up to report of chair, and I really don't. Don't have a report tonight, I'm looking forward to having the full board at a meeting sometime soon. Doesn't feel like we've done that much lately, it's for somehow. Uh, Nate and Pam, anything on port of staff?
No, I don't, uh, have anything, I will say in the next, you know, few meetings of the planning board, there'll be. A number of discussions about University Drive, there's the overlay. There's four twenty-two Amity Street, and then four twenty-two Amity Street has submitted a preliminary subdivision plan to freeze the zoning. So, um, you know. It could be that the board has questions, the public may have questions, um, and there's probably another project with University Drive, and so there's a lot of University Drive. Uh, in the agenda and what's being talked about, um, so just, you know. Email staff if there's questions or if you, you know, are confusing projects, or, you know, the public asks you questions, you can direct them to staff.
Okay. All right, uh, anything else? Um, anybody wants to talk about, it's ten after nine now? All right, uh, thank you all, especially Karen. For giving us some time from her timeout on the West Coast. So, nine ele- it's nine eleven and we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you, Doug. Night, everyone.
Good night. Night, Pam.
I always struggle to find the end of recording, I don't know where it is, this appears. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna hang us up, we'll see you soon, bye.